6:39 PM, a motion was made by Mrs. White, seconded by Mrs. Finley to come out of executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read?
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
Motion by Mr. Wong, seconded by...
Ms. Lewis.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Uh, opposed, motion carries. Next item, approval of personnel. Do you hear a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
I make a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented.
Mrs. White.
I'll second.
Ms. Finley, is there any discussion? All in favor? Uh, opposed, motion carries. Next, superintendent reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Financial update, uh, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Detective. You know, I'm trying to come up, um... As of June 7th, we have collected eighty-seven point five oh percent of our budgeted revenue in our general fund. Of that, ninety-four point two eight percent of the added warrant taxes have been collected, um, about same place we were last year. We will still be able to collect June, July, and August, and that will be back into FY-18 as we are required to do by the Department of Education and Department of Office. All the other categories, everything seems to be coming in nicely. Um, we have expended seventy-five point one three percent of our budgeted expenditures. I'll just remind you, anyone who is not twelve months, we still have June, July, and August checks that we actually cut in June, and they are back into FY-18 because the work was done in eighteen. So it's called supplemental payroll. But, um, all those will be run in the next two weeks, plus about six supplemental payrolls, additional small payrolls. Um, so we're kind of busy right now. Uh, we still have Georgia Department of Office accounts working with us. They were on-site for a week. They went off-site to go to do training, but somehow they're still managing to ask for lots and lots of goodies, and some extras are now emailing us, so we're, we're, we're trying to get everything to them as quickly as we can, so... But they will be back on-site, um, the last week of June, and possibly into the first week of July to hopefully finish up. Um, we're hoping to have them out here by the end of July. Y'all have any questions on the budgeted expenditures? Our SPOS account for, um, the end of May, we have revenue, uh, three hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and seven cents.
I always say over.
I thought Mark does not do that. It's the third report.
And there's three PMS.
Okay, Waki's finding that.
No, nobody just made that.
It's not that one. There you go. We collected interest of three thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-one cents. We had three expenditures as they are noted there. Um, these are all projects that are currently open. Um, at the end of May, our SPOS four and five balance is nine million six hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and six cents. And this is our running total, just so you can see here we are. Um, our twelve-month average is hovering around three hundred ninety-three five, so we're in good shape. Um, those collections, when they, they go up like that, and that average stays high, I'd like to see that. Y'all have any questions?
Attendants update, Ms. Campbell?
All right, okay, I think I want to do the dropout report first. So, dropouts for the year are nine. We got nine dropouts for the year. We've had no dropouts to report for the last month of school, which is very, very bad. Um, last year, I believe it was ten, if I calculated correctly, so we all arrived at probably the same number we were last year. Um, any questions? People have any thoughts on the dropout? Attendance? Do the school attendings first? And Cory? Cory is gonna miss his shining star moment. Anybody here for Cory's school? Oh goodness. Um... Cory's... I definitely not. That's definitely not. I do have a copy. I'll carry on. Okay, I'm trying to play Mark up. Harmony Elementary, ninety-six point five eight percent. So congratulations to Harmony for the highest school attendance for the month. And then also congratulations to Harmony Elementary's staff, who has teacher or attendance for the month, ninety-seven point eight zero. So again, congratulations to, double congratulations to Harmony. We do have two certificates, and we have the attendance banner, just so Cory, from your watching this, you'll know that we didn't have that. But you're not here, so anyway, um, just wanted to say, also, just to give you just a quick glance throughout the year, um, we kind of highlight throughout the year, um, the schools that make attendance improvements for the month. So for the highest this year, Harmony, excuse me, Harmony Elementary. Um, there was six months in a row where you guys made improvements over last year. And then in second place was Harmony. Third place would have been Jasper Middle and Pickens High School. Fourth place, Tate. Then we go into fifth place. Uh, we, we had two fourth place, Tate and Jasper Elementary, and then we had, uh, fifth place, we had Pickens County Middle School. When I say this place, all of these schools made drastic improvements, so we want to commend everybody for their hard work and dedication to school attendance. Um, but again, the number one that made improvements throughout the school year was Gilson. Congratulations. We want to make a little bit, we want to make really, really cut out those little stage steps. Uh, okay. That's it. If y'all have any questions, remember.
Thank you. Operations constructions, Mr. Stacy.
Busy, busy summer right now. Everything in the world going on. Full swing on the moving. Made a lot of headways, still got a lot to do. By the end of this month, I think everybody will be really surprised because it's now fixing loose ends, and we, we probably have half of Jasper Middle School still to move, but a lot of that's not going to move until we get everything else done, because most of that's going to go in storage, stuff like that, so. Got a lot going on. Uh, and Welcome Center will start next week, so we'll have it ready for you. We relocated so we could fix it a different way the lane comes in and not bottleneck down to two lanes. We're gonna keep the three lanes, because we, after going out and observing one morning, I looked at Chris, and I said, "We can do this." He'll never get people to school anymore, so we, we fixed that. Transportation just had a training class that actually ended today. We had four people in it. We actually had a coach or two come over and do it to help us out, so that was good. Uh, Transportation and myself will be attending the state GAPT training session this, next week in, uh, Jekyll Island. It's a long week and a lot of classes. The technicians, our shop technicians, attended a class and training up in North Georgia College for, in competition that state holds every year. That went well for us. Uh, we're still working on routes, uh, and routing, and it's not a problem, it's just we're trying to tweak them as good as we can. We will have drivers come in midway through July and actually run the routes and time them and see how long it's really gonna take. I mean, we can, we can run it by the, the first train all day long, but till you actually get in the bus and drive it and see. So we'll, we'll have it tied down. We are gonna be able to eliminate some of our double routes. We've already eliminated two, possibly more, and as the year goes on and we tweak on this, we're gonna head toward trying to get rid of all of them. We may have to have an extended day for a couple of drivers to do transfers from school to school and stuff like that, but it's not a full double route, so it would, it'd save us some money in the long run. Uh, our new buses should be in the middle of July, we hope. They promising us they are. If they're not, we're gonna be mad, because we ordered early. But that all looks good. Radio system, they have gone around to all the schools, done their inventory check, they're gonna start installing next week. We'll fill in, put them in the buses, it won't take them two days to re, to replace all the radios in the buses. So by school and by, by way before school, we should have that fully up in operation. It's going good. The summer feed, the SRO didn't have a report, but summer feeding program is going well. It's, it's not as many kids as we wanted on, on the bus deal, on the, on the traveling around, because we, we were kind of overlapping a couple of churches, and we trying to revamp the way we're, where we're going, although at the high school and the other places, we've had lots of kids, right? You had probably five hundred this week at the high school or more, so that's going good. But other than that, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman. Next be action items. I hear a budget amendment.
Just a second, catch up. Um, we have asked for a budget amendment for our FY-18 budget. Um, anything that you need to clean up for this fiscal year, this is our last regional meeting, so unless y'all have another one, this is my last shot to do this, but, um, in the process of going through and reviewing everything for year end, um, we have a surplus of money in instruction, and this was, most of this was created by employees opting not to take state health. And we have this problem most every year, as state health benefits are not quite as good as they used to be. But what we would like to do is move six hundred and ten thousand from instruction to M&amp;O. As y'all know, we have quite a few SPOS projects that we had already had approved by the board or things that were embedded in the M&amp;O budget that we would like to, we're going to be able to complete them by June the 30th. Um, we have the money available, it is for this fiscal year, we would like to move the money. It does not increase the total expenditure budget, just move it from one line item to the next. Um, the other thing in here that you really can't even see here, but I've sent you the detail, um, within transportation, um, they did not spend all their money, and most of it also came out of salary and benefits, but there was, there was some operating money that they just didn't spend and said they didn't need, so they didn't spend it, and I appreciate that very much. But, um, we went through and we talked with, um, I talked with Stacy, and we talked to the folks in the transportation department, and they had requested that we purchase three white fleet vehicles. Um, two of these would be straight-up replacements from two we have. Then one, a couple of years ago, we surplused four. The next year, we bought three, but one was not a replacement of one of the four from the year before, so we're really been down two from what we had, and we'd like to, it's new to this year, because we did the surplusing in seventeen, um, so it would be new compared to eighteen, but from a couple of years ago. But we added that courier run, that person who goes around to every location and takes our mail. Instead of ten different people running around the county, we have one most of the time. So we would like to request those three vehicles, but we did not budget a line item to cover that in our general fund budget last year. So it's in excess of ten thousand dollars. Um, just out of safety sake, when it comes to protocol, to let y'all know what is going on in the budget, we would like to ask that line item to be moved. Again, the total there does not increase. Just to give you a little information on that white fleet, of our twenty-five white fleet vehicles, nineteen are over ten years old, and they go all the way back to thirty years old. So just to kind of give you a little information, we have, of the six that are not over ten years old, one's a two thousand and ten, we have one two thousand and fifteen, one two thousand and sixteen, and three two thousand and seventeen. Everything else is a oh eight or further back, and it goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-eight on the duck truck. So... They're, it's a very aged inventory. We've done a very good job, I think, of making sure we are taking care of our buses now, but we picked up on the buses, but we have let the white fleet go for quite some time. Um, when you look at the list, these are the vehicle years, eighty-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, two thousand, oh-one, oh-one, oh-three, oh-five, oh-six, oh-six, oh-seven, 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 oh-eight, oh-eight, oh-eight. So it is quite an aged inventory, so, but we have the request to just use the money that's left. It's not any additional money, but to use some of that money to purchase those three vehicles. Um, we have actually checked some prices, and, um, we were looking at used, but the pricing between a couple-of-year-old vehicle with no warranty and a brand-new vehicle right now with a five-year warranty was twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's where the amount came from that we had requested. Another item is just a housekeeping item, um, the substitutes, when we went to the outside of the third-party company handling it, they used to be in salary and benefits, under one thirteen and one fourteen. Well, we started this in February, so I need it moved to three hundred, which is contracted services. And again, it doesn't increase the total, I just need to move it from line item to line item to address that, and we have not paid any of those bills yet, so I need that line item there, uh, 'cause it was not approved for that purpose, and it is a larger item, so just wanted to let y'all know what's going on with that. Y'all have any other questions? And it is just general fund. I think I bolded the special revenue, but it's only general fund, that did not change anything in special revenue.
Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendment, FY-18 budget as presented?
I make a motion that we approve the FY-18 budget amendments as presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Wong, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next will be the approval of the adoption of textbooks and instructional materials.
Now, we've, we've talked about it, that this is actually going into adopt. The textbook is our curriculum, or with our curriculum, and it's, uh, it's an unusual year this year. It's a double textbook adoption, science and social studies, and it's played into about nine hundred thousand dollars. So we'd like to go ahead and have that approved, so we can order for next year.
And this was approved, or this was presented to the board during our budget review?
Yes.
Appreciate the presentations during that time. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the adoption of textbooks and instructional materials as presented?
I make a motion to approve the adoption of textbooks and instructional materials as presented. I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. White, seconded by Ms. Finley, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next will be the approval of the FY-19 tentative budget.
I'm gonna go through the FY-19 tentative budget.
Motion by Ms. Finley, I hear a second.
I think... Amy, did you have something? I'm scared.
We can do it during discussion, yes. We can go to the motion on the floor, which is discussion. Okay. Okay. Have a motion by Ms. Finley? I have a second.
I'm just gonna do the second one.
Yeah, we do this, we'll get a motion. I'll go ahead and second that motion. Now, is there any discussion? Any motion discussion?
Just so the public knows, um, we have, we have required public meetings, that we can call a public hearing, where the board is required to publish an ad announcing a meeting where the public can attend and voice any concerns or opinions they have on the upcoming budget. Um, the board is simply to listen at this point, so we had two required meetings, and we had those. We've also had our budget workshops, where we go into quite a bit of detail with the budget. Um, so the outcome, I want to share it just a little bit with you. There was one number I needed to get here. We did have a significant increase in our revenue. Um, our QBE funds jumped from, um, I don't have it separated, I'm sorry. We had a, a large increase overall in the total revenue, from forty-five point three million up to just a tad over forty-seven million. Now, our expenditures jumped a little more than that, so they were two point, a two-point-six million dollar increase. And one of the items, of course, y'all are aware of, is this textbook and instructional materials adoption. It's approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. It's a double adoption for science and social studies. Um, and I'm not sure anybody's been here as long as we have not had new social studies books, but, um, this was a needed adoption. There was quite a bit of time, from August of last year, a committee was put together, um, and they met, I don't, I can't even go into all the detail of how many times they met, what kind of information they pulled, how many series they looked at, how many teachers got their hands on books for science and social studies. Um, so that was a significant process. It is a large dollar amount, and I do appreciate the time that our curriculum people did put into this, and all of our staff members. This was principals, assistant principals, teachers, um, parents, and then it was also open to the public. Those books and those materials were in this room for, how many days? It was a, it was a week, and then we were available the entire month, if someone would come in and see it, so. So just to let everybody know, it is an extensive process, and there are requirements from the Department of Education, and we have adhered to all the requirements. Um, the other larger item that came through, and I know most of y'all have seen it in the AJC, but our mandatory TRS, uh, mandatory deduction on TRS, and that's for anyone who is eligible for that TRS benefit, that's Teacher Retirement System, and it's not just teachers. Equates to about a million dollars for us this year. It is the largest increase that I have seen since I have worked here for eighteen years. Um, we hope it is not repeatable in the next few years. It is, that was, that was a hard one, and it hit instruction for about eight hundred thousand of that million. So there's one point nine million of our two-point-six million dollar increase right off the bat. The other things we did, and I'm gonna go well over the two-point-six million, just to let you know some of the things we did, 'cause some things we were able to cut back, but these are the things we did add. We have added, uh, six teaching positions. Um, we had teacher step increases, and these are mandatory too, based on their certificate level and their experience level, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We are going to provide the students K-4, a new software program next year called Fast Forward. Um, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's an investment in beginning, and then that cost backs off significantly. We have a couple of technology initiatives, um, y'all know about the cameras in the classroom, so some of the software licensing that has to do with that, that was over fifty thousand dollars, and there's another thirty-two, five in professional learning, who of course our staff has to know how to use them appropriately. Um, we have a technology security system that looks at what our children are getting accessing on the internet and on their computers, and it alerts the appropriate people if something is not something they need to be looking at, and that's about forty thousand dollars, but, um, based on some of the things that have happened in the past year, we felt like that was something that needed to happen here with this county to make this, uh, to let the whole community feel a little safer when it comes to those issues. Overall, our salary and benefits, um, are about eighty-three point seven eight percent of our budget. The state average runs eighty-six to eighty-eight percent. So more of our money is going into the instructional part, quite a bit this time. Overall, about sixteen percent of the budget is to operate the school system. So that's lights, power, books, um, paper, um, any kind of equipment, and that does not include SPOS. That is just general fund. So we have quite a bit more that comes out of SPOS that also goes into the classroom. So, um, we're very pleased that we were able to do that this year. Um, y'all have questions?
Now, thanks for breaking that down for us, and, yeah.
I know I went over the two-point-six, but we did some good stuff, so, you know, we'd like to share that.
Because we do have the motion on the floor, we're at a second. Do we have any more discussion? One, once, twice? Okay. All those in favor? Five in favor, motion carries. Next is the approval of a spending resolution for July twenty eighteen.
It's my turn all night. This is something, um, that we're doing a little differently this year. When I went to my financial training in May, the director of the Financial Review Department, which is the department that pretty much governs my area, my whole section in business services, um, made a couple of comments that caused me to go talk to her after the session. Um, there were comments made, a lot of school systems do a tentative budget a little earlier, and you have to have a two-week window in between to meet some additional requirements on advertising the tentative budget, and then you can do your final budget. You do not have to wait for the digest. Um, we have typically waited for the digest, because if the numbers don't mesh like you think they're going to, then you might have to go back and redoing a tentative budget approval and wait two more weeks, and so it can cause it to be quite lengthy and quite a few meetings. Um, but the comment was made, if you do a tentative budget, you really don't have a real budget. So, we're following the protocol, but it was recommended that we also do a spending resolution. Well, in the past, and again, I've been here eighteen years, if we did not have a tentative budget in place, and that did, that's what used to happen, if we didn't have a tentative budget by July first, then we would have to have a spending resolution that gives the superintendent the authority to spend money in the month of July. Um, if it continues beyond, you have to do an approval each month. Um, there are some specifications you have to meet, and I'm, if you don't mind, it's short, I would like to read it so everyone knows. But we haven't done the tentative and the spending resolution together. Most systems, we were under the impression you did one or the other. The recommendation now is to do both, unless you have your final in place by July first, and I think we were gonna try to do our final, you know, either at the regular July meeting or even wait on the digest, so I'm just gonna go with what they recommend. Whereas, the Pickens County Board of Education, for good and sufficient reason, is unable to adopt a budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the public exigency is best served by authorizing the superintendent to continue to expend funds to continue operations, now therefore be it resolved by the Pickens County Board of Education that the superintendent may expend funds from all funds for the month of July, two thousand and eighteen, not to exceed one twelfth of the final adopted budget for all funds for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, plus debt service and capital expenditures known to be due in July. Yes, that says August, it should say July. Adopted this fourteenth day of June, two thousand and eighteen, and it requires the superintendent and the board chair signature. Y'all have any questions about, I, I'm, I'm simply being safe on this. I've never had an audit issue come up, I've never had it questioned if we did one or the other, when they come into a training session and say, "The director of my area says, 'Well, we think this is probably the best practice,'" then we try to follow that best practice. Maybe a little of a killer.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the spending resolution for July twenty eighteen?
Approve the spending resolution.
Motion by Mr. Wong. You're second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Finley. Second by Mrs. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next will be the ABM contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have approval on the board to be able to sign the service agreement with ABM this next year. Couple of quick things. We've redone the agreement. They've eliminated the Jasper Middle School campus. We've changed and tweaked their daily, weekly, and monthly cleaning details, and they are adding six more employees to our contract, and we're actually saving $67,512 over last year's cost. There again, if things are not where we want them to be, there is the clause in the agreement that we could look elsewhere if it's not to the level of our satisfaction.
Do I hear a motion to approve the signing of an amended ABM contract as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the signing of the amended contract.
And I'll second that.
The only discussion is that if we don't approve it, I hope y'all have some time to help me clean the schools.
And we did discuss it pretty extensively during our budget meetings.
That we were going to go and help clean the schools? Obviously, we all have a little bit of hesitation on this one because we have not been totally happy with their services. However, we really don't have a good alternate at the moment, so.
And hopefully with the addition of six, six more staff members and a renewed, I guess, yeah, I think we let them know that we were not pleased with the feedback that we're getting from you guys in your schools, that we're expecting more. We're going to have another, oh, God, a man pulling more every day. I couldn't be there every day. We will have that.
And we continue to welcome comments from our employees and the community regarding this issue.
Please keep us posted. I've had some reservations about this, and please let us know if the schools are not clean to your liking, because we really want to know.
The people in our place do it unbelievably good job.
You're at Pickens County Middle School.
Yeah, you have a great.
We haven't heard anything from your school.
I just wanted to throw that out.
Yes, your school, we have heard a lot of good stuff about them.
Tate too.
Tate too. Yes. I don't heard Tate really either.
Well, for the rest of you guys.
For the people that are not speaking up.
I did get a new person that's awesome.
Good.
We haven't had any complaints since. We haven't had any complaints, yes, April.
Well, hopefully with six additional employees, that will help. We just want you to know you've been heard.
And just so you know, it's not just the school system problem. The company that I work for, we employ, we contract that service out, and it's constantly going through people. We have three shifts of folks, and just one bad one on one shift makes it rough on others and gives them a bad name. So it's a constant struggle everywhere inside the school system. We do have high expectations for these folks in our schools.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next, approval of the out-of-state field trip for Pickens Junior High 7th grade.
It's actually.
Maybe overnight. They're going to Jekyll and Savannah.
Okay, so both of them, it's just overnight.
Both on Savannah and one's Jekyll.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the overnight field trip for Pickens Junior High 7th grade to Jekyll Island. That is April 17th through the 19th of 2019. All in favor? Five opposed? Next will be same thing, overnight field trips. Pickens Junior High 8th grade to Savannah on March 20th through the 22nd of 2019.
I make a motion to approve the 8th grade field trip, overnight field trip.
Motion by Mrs. White, seconded by Ms. Finley. Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Next, approval of minutes. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes from the May 10 regular meeting and the May 18th and the May 31st call budget meetings. You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Five opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have surplus, a pretty extensive surplus.
Can we get Stacy maybe to read through all these items? Understand everything he's getting rid of up here?
Yeah. What do you got planned for all this?
I did look at them, and a lot of them, I didn't know what they were. They ate you some of it, you think?
I like the end of life. The reason we're getting rid of it, it's end of life.
End of life.
Patrick makes me sign his, and I don't have a clue what he's getting rid of.
It is pretty extensive, I guess a lot of it, though, is just cleanup of stuff.
Especially since we've been cleaning up, getting out everywhere.
This has been a perfect opportunity. You have your purse and stuff that's been hanging around.
The state is really picky about you getting rid of stuff like this, so we have to do
this. And I know it's cumbersome, there's a lot of stuff, but we need to do it. And if it's, and when we go through this now, if the seat's broken or the legs warp or something, we get rid of it. I'm not going to hold on to this stuff anymore. We're going to get rid of it, absolutely.
Do I hear a motion to approve the surplus list?
Go ahead, I'll second it.
I'll make the motion to approve the massive list of surplus.
I'm not reading every one of them.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mrs. White. Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Five opposed? Motion carries.
I do want the Proud to Be Polite taken out and given to my children. There's a Proud to Be Polite video. I think I'm going to pass that on.
Next item is board comments.
Any comments? I'd just like to make a comment, and I know we did for the successful school year, but for right now, for all of the moving and the stuff that you are having to do, and I know how much it is just from moving one classroom down the hall to another that I've done before, and this is a massive undertaking, and appreciative of all the schools for their hard work, and especially of the schools like Jasper, the new Jasper Middle School, and new junior high with all of the reconfigurations and the cleaning out of JMS. I'm sure that was a monumental task, because not only did it used to be the middle school was a high school, and I bet there was stuff there that was still from when it was the high school. Am I right? I know you're right, because I went there the other day, and in the back closet in the library, there was games there I know were from the 60s. I know, I saw them there. So thank you for all the hard work, and Stacy, your crew. I know that it is a lot of work, so I'm really appreciative of all the hard work, everybody's extra hours people have been putting in. I know it was a lot, and I don't want the teachers to think we don't know and don't remember it, but thank you for all the hard, what'd you say, Jimmy Hoffa was there? I think he was buried in the cabin that's in the library.
I've got five or six kids from the high school working every day with us, too. That's been a benefit, and they're making some money, too, and they're doing a good job, so.
I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. White said. In addition to all the hard work, I have been gratified to hear the positive attitude that has come from everybody. I haven't heard any grumbling, any complaining. I probably would have been doing some grumbling and complaining if I were a part of that. It would be justified, but everybody has demonstrated tremendous can-do attitude, and we're going to make it work, and this is going to be a wonderful opportunity, and it's going to give us all a little bit of a challenge and kind of freshness for next year. I truly appreciate the attitude, and that comes from the top-down folks, and we know that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Next item is to adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Excuse me? I will admit to talk about something else. Are you adjourned in the meeting?
We are.
I've never been to one of your meetings, and I don't know whether this would be the right one, but I actually wanted to come in and talk about the school safety as far as our children go.
We got, we can meet with you after, or you can speak with Dr. Wilson.
That would be great.
Yeah, but the agenda's approved as it is, so, but we'll be glad once we adjourn the meeting to let you speak.
What's the time of the last one to get here? First one to leave.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five opposed?